Ms. Vice Chair Holler.
Here.
Chair Madrid.
Here.
Can Jeff Ladue please lead us in the flag salute?
I would like to stand and praise the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
What a great audience tonight. Okay, there are no presentations. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, can I ask the Planning Commission for an all in favor to approve the agenda?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on the non-agenda items?
There are none.
Great. Okay. There are no consent calendar items. Okay, before we begin this public hearing...
Chair, I'm sorry, can we ask for approval of the minutes for the July 9, 2025 meeting?
I was wondering if you were going to catch that. There is one set of minutes for the Planning Commission's approval. Does the Planning Commission have any modifications? Okay, could I ask for the Planning Commission for an all in favor to approve the July 9, 2025 minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. Now we go on to item eight, there are no consent calendar items. Okay, so before we begin this public hearing, I'd like to briefly explain the procedures. Following the staff presentation and any questions from the commission, I will open the public hearing. The applicant will then have an opportunity to speak, followed by members of the audience who wish to address the commission. Each speaker will be given up to three uninterrupted minutes to provide their comments. Please note that the commission will not be able to respond to comments or questions posed during the public comment portion, but may raise questions or issues with staff or the applicant after the public hearing is closed. Okay. Okay, make sure I got that. Okay, so that takes us to item 9.1, Denny's Restaurant.
Good evening, Chair. Staff request that this item be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting, and that will be August 13.
Thank you, Orlando. Okay, so that takes us to item 9.2, Santa Rosa Academy Expansion. Do we need a vote to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can we do an all in favor for that, please? Aye.
Aye.
And just for clarification, that...
Miss?
Here.
Vice Chair Holler?
Here.
Chair Madrid?
Here. Can Jeff Ladue please lead us in the flag salute?
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
What a great audience tonight. Okay, there are no presentations. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, can I ask the planning commission for an all in favor to approve the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on the non-agenda items?
There are none.
There are no consent calendar items. Okay, before we begin this public hearing...
Chair, I'm sorry, can we ask for approval of the minutes for the July 9th, 2025 meeting?
I was wondering if you were gonna catch that. There is one set of minutes for the planning commission's approval. Does the planning commission have any modifications? Okay, could I ask for the planning commission for an all in favor to approve the July 9th, 2025 minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. Now we go on to item eight, there are no consent calendar items. Okay. So before we begin this public hearing, I'd like to briefly explain the procedures. Following the staff presentation and any questions from the commission, I will open the public hearing. The applicant will then have an opportunity to speak, followed by members of the audience who wish to address the commission. Each speaker will be given up to three uninterrupted minutes to provide their comments. Please note that the commission will not be able to respond to comments or questions posed during the public comment portion, but may raise questions or issues with staff or the applicant after the public hearing is closed. Okay. Okay, make sure I got that. Okay, so that takes us to item 9.1, Denny's Restaurant.
Good evening Chair. Staff request that this item be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting and that will be August 13.
Thank you Orlando. Okay, so that takes us to item 9.2, Santa Rosa Academy Expansion. Do we need a vote to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can we do an all in favor for that, please? Aye.
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 And just for clarification, that is the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on August 13th, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go to 9.2, Santa Rosa Academy Expansion. So this is item 9.2. Could the committee development director please introduce the item?
Thank you. Our associate planner Brandon Cleary will be making the presentation. He's our Santa Rosa expert, has been helping out with all the different expansions they've had. In fact, I was close to asking Dr. Hennings to maybe put him in first grade and have him work out of there because he does so much work for them. But yeah, he'll be handling the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Orlando. Good evening Chair and Commissioners. The project before you is the Santa Rosa Expansion, a major modification PLN 25-0003. The project is located within the Menifee Town Center Specific Plan, Planning Area 5, south of La Pietra Road, east of Sherman, west of Han Road and the Flood Channel, and north of Cloudy Peak Way. As I stated, the general plan and zoning is the Town Center Specific Plan, Planning Area 5. To the east we have the Flood Channel zoning and Economic Development Corridor, Corridor Community Core. To the west is High Density Residential and EDC Community Core. To the south is the Countryside Marketplace Specific Plan, which has traditional tract homes. And then to the north is the rest of Menifee Town Center with the multifamily apartments and detached single-family lots. For a little bit of background, the Santa Rosa Academy campus was approved in 2012 under Public Use Permit 2011-165, for which all but the theater building was constructed. Santa Rosa proposes to modify the public use permit to replace the theater building with this elementary school building, which will be two stories at approximately 28,500 square feet, which will include 16 classrooms for an additional 217 students and seven staff members. The building will also have a stage and multipurpose area to replace the theater building to continue their theater program. And the new building is being placed in the northeast corner of the project site. Here is the floor plan showing the design of the interior of the building. The 16 classrooms will be placed along the outer edge of the building with the stage and multipurpose area in the middle. For architecture, it incorporates the same Santa Barbara and Spanish themes that the rest of the complex has, including the window trellises, stucco arches, and the Spanish tile. In addition, the ends of the building, which face west and east, incorporate stone veneer on a good chunk of the exterior of the building, along with a cupola, I believe is what it's called, which is the tower element. Approximately 6,800 square feet of landscaping will be installed around the building to help screen it from view, which is also consistent with the remainder of the campus. The original Santa Rosa was approved with an addendum to the Town Center Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report. An additional addendum was prepared for this project, which analyzed the same subjects, including but not limited to traffic, biology, cultural noise, air quality, hydrology and water quality. This second addendum was prepared and it confirms that no new impacts above what the original EIR identified would exceed any thresholds The project was noticed on July 13th for today's planning commission meeting and no public comments have been received. Staff's recommendation is to approve the project as outlined in this presentation and the staff report. And this concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions, along with our CQ consultant and the Santa Rosa staff. They also have a presentation that kind of outlines their proposed pickup time and drop-off time staggering to help assist with traffic concerns.
Thank you Associate Planner Brandon Cleary. Does the planning commission have any questions for staff? Ivan?
Thank you. I think the question, my only question is on traffic and the change from the auditorium to the classroom, but I suspect that some of my questions may be answered during the applicant presentation. So I want to hear that and then maybe pick this line of questioning up, although it's not long, after we hear from the applicant.
Thank you Ivan. Michael?
I'm good.
You good? Chris? Chris, you have any questions?
No.
Tammy? Yeah, I'll hold off on mine too. Okay. So I'll open the public hearing at 6:09. Madam Clerk, can you confirm that the item was legally noticed and if any correspondence has been received?
It was legally noticed and we didn't receive any correspondence.
Great. Okay. I'd like to invite the applicant to the podium to speak.
Good evening and thank you to our Santa Rosa Academy Fan Club. In the back, we have representatives from our parents and staff and from our construction firm.
Could you state your name, please?
This is, I'm Dr. Robert Hennings, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Santa Rosa Academy and we have our facilities manager, Mr. Peter Arbaio.
Peter.
So we do have for a presentation this evening of how we stagger our, not only our drop-off times to the school, that was something that was established back with the original permit and we've continued to do so, but how we intend to reshuffle it so that we do not have any more impact added to streets spillage that we, above what we already currently have. And so you see that we have four groupings that we have planned for after we open the new facility. Our kindergarten through second grade pickup time is at 2:45 in the afternoon and currently K through 2 is all combined with the rest of elementary. But given that we'll have some additional cars visit the campus to do child pickup, we wanted to make sure that we remove in-kind that amount of traffic and have them come at a separate time and a different location than we currently do, so we avoid adding any extra traffic spillage into the area. And so our K through 2, if you go to the next slide, our K through 2, we will be changing the location where they pick up. Instead of picking up on the La Pietra pickup line, they are going to follow the scheme that we have for our middle school that's been wildly successful for years. They're going to come in off our Sherman gate, bring the traffic into the rear of our campus, pick up in the rear, and then they'll exit out onto La Pietra, make a right-hand turn, and either go left or right on Han. Next slide, please. At 2:55 is when the rest of our elementary will continue with their traditional pickup, as it currently is on our pickup lane on La Pietra. And they'll exit back out onto La Pietra and again, go either left or right onto Han. Of course, if they have some shopping to do, they can go straight. Next slide. Our middle school pickup will then follow later at 3:10 PM and they'll come through our Sherman entrance. They'll queue up in the rear of our campus so that we bring the traffic off of the street and onto our property. They'll pick up the students and they'll leave out onto La Pietra and use Han as their egress from the area. Next slide. And then our last group, which is our smallest group, high school picks up at 3:35 PM. And then, next slide. And then in the morning time, all of our students drop off in the morning. And we have not had an issue over the years with students dropping off in the morning, but we've maintained staggered drop-off times. They all use the La Pietra drop-off lane, but we'll have our kindergarten through 2 drop off between 8 to 8:25, grades 3 through 5 at the same time. Middle school drops off at 7:30 to 7:55, so we'll get middle school on campus before the elementary students arrive. And then high school, they drop off at 7:40 to 8:25. And so we'll have most of those high school students on campus before the elementary students arrive. By staggering, it creates a nice consistent flow in that morning to bring the cars in off of La Pietra as quickly as possible and out through our lanes and back onto La Pietra to egress out from the area. And it's a system that's worked really well. A few years back, traffic officers worked with us to try to change it up to make an adjustment and ended up actually adding to traffic out onto the streets. And so we reverted back to the system that we have. And this past year was our fastest drop-off and our fastest pickup and egress out of the area that we've seen. We added additional staff out to the front during drop-off some pickups to help facilitate the flow, helping kids get into the cars quicker. It's the picking up that's a longer process, particularly with little kids. You know, for some of them, they have to about have step ladders to get into some of the vehicles, but it's fun to help the little ones in. You know, the larger kids, man, it's like the car doesn't even stop moving and somehow they're in the car already. So, but it's worked out very well. We regularly get compliments from traffic officers who say that our processes are noticeably different and they opine about some of the difficulties in some other areas of town where some of the school traffic can impede travel through the area for 40, 45 minutes. But we haven't had anything like that at all.
Yeah, it works well.
I do need to give compliments to city staff. When we began this project and started working with them a few years ago to let them know that we needed to complete our campus build-out, they had a really great idea of going in first, adding the extra parking that the building was going to require and adding the fire lane that it was going to need. And so by taking care of all of that ahead of time, it has made a more efficient process for us currently in terms of traffic, but we won't have that hang-up going on while we're doing the rest of the building construction part. And so it was very smart on their part to advise us of that. And it's brought us to a point where we do not believe that any of the actual construction activity on the building is going to cause us any traffic headaches because we have that extra parking and we have the fire lane already added.
Very good. Works for me. It doesn't hold me up when I'm driving by there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
So do you agree with the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Which aren't many.
The city staff, you have a very professional staff and they have done a great job in advising and working with us for several months now in getting us to this point. We really appreciate their help.
We appreciate you too. Okay, well, yes, Ivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for your presentation. So you answered almost all of my questions. I just have one more thing to ask. You had said that in the original use permit, the public use permit, not a permit I'm all that familiar with, but I assume you can regulate ongoing conditions just like a CUP, but you said there was a condition in the original permit that relates to the staggered drop-off. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, the original permit actually called for the staggering of drop-off and pickup times. And it also called for there to be staff on hand to help facilitate the kids exiting vehicles and entering vehicles to help keep things moving as efficiently as possible.
Great, thank you. My question now is gonna be for those guys sitting over there. So, given that there's a staggered pickup and drop-off condition in the original permit, that'll carry over to the changes here. And the only reason I ask the question is how the auditorium would be used and when traffic with ingress and egress from the site with the auditorium is obviously different than a classroom. And so I just want to make sure that that's gonna carry forward. As long as you guys shake your heads up and down, I am good with that and I appreciate your presentation. And I like to hear the motors are happy. The motors are happy? You guys are motors.
He covers.
All right.
Thank you Ivan.
I have a question. Oh.
Dr. Hennings, welcome. It was not unnoticed that you didn't talk about your project at all, but you came in here and you talked about traffic, which was my biggest concern. The building itself, it's a big Chick-fil-A, you know, no offense to you guys or Chick-fil-A or whatever, but I don't know about the rest of you guys, but my main concern was traffic. And it's been like that, not just for you guys, it's been like that. I've been involved with Menifee, Paloma, you know, all that. But I was handed this yesterday. All my concerns about traffic, gone. So I appreciate all the work you guys did. I wasn't even aware that this staggering happened. I think you need to call Dr. Root and get it going at their schools, but yeah, we're gonna add, we're gonna add traffic to the project, 217 students. But it looks like you've mitigated that. One other question, a couple of questions I have is all these drop-off and pickup times. How many of, how many multiple student families do you have where that's gonna impact a student being there 45 minutes earlier, half hour early for both pickup and drop-offs? Do you have that number?
From my visual memory, we, first, let me explain how we address that. It has always been at our school that if you have younger students waiting for older siblings to get out of school, they go to our air-conditioned plaza, work on homework and things.
You have a place.
And so they're with our campus supervisors and they're waiting for their older sibling to get out of school. And then they leave school during their older sibling's pickup time. It's a system that's worked out really well. Most of our families use that. On any given day, there's about 50 students in our plaza waiting for an older sibling's pickup time for them to get out of school. And it's great, big brother, big sister, whether they're a middle schooler or a high schooler comes and picks them up and just handholds them and walks them out to get picked up. Some of them have older high school students who already drive and it's kind of cute to see them walk them out to the student lot and load up in big brother's car and go home. There are a small number of families that prefer just to come get them whenever they're available and they'll make multiple runs to campus to pick up different kids in shifts. That works for their family, but most of our families by and large just wait to pick them all up in one group.
I appreciate that. One other question. How is ABA or AB 9884, whatever it is?
AB 84, yeah.
If that passes, how's that gonna affect your student population?
AB 84, as it's currently written, as it came out of the State Assembly side, has some harmful impacts on charter schools that operate independent study programs. So that would affect our full-time independent study group, which is our homeschool families. It would also impact our part-time students, because part-time students in California are considered independent, a form of independent study. There are several amendments on the Senate side... There are several amendments on the Senate side currently being considered and lobbied for. So, at this point in time, it's speculation of what the final form of AB-84 will be when it's voted upon. Assuming there are no changes, if they're just going to vote on what the State Assembly sent to them, it would cause schools like ours to reevaluate the viability of continuing those type of independent study programs. Our homeschool and our part-time student population comprises about 38% of our total student population. In order to sort, shield ourselves from whatever new requirements would be imposed by AB-84, we'd need to get our independent study program to about less than 10%. We could still operate independent study, it would just have to be on a much smaller scale, which would mean that for those other students, it would be approximately 125 students. We would, instead of having some of these new, there's four classrooms that are marked to be servicing our part-time students, we would need to convert those to full-time daily attendance classrooms so that we could accommodate 125 of our students to add to our daily load. Now, that's all speculation based on how AB-84 currently sits, assuming that there are no changes and goes forward as the State Assembly handed it to the Senate.
You're saying 125 potential students?
Yes.
You didn't just make that number up. I saw you read it.
Yeah.
So, 125 I'm okay with. If you said 900 additional students that are on those other tracks, then that brings us back to more traffic problems.
We're fortunate that more than lion's share of our campus is already full-time attenders, and our campus already has a finite capacity. And this latest addition, which completes our campus build-out, as you see, only mildly increased our overall student population.
Commissioner Thomas.
One comment, one question. So, with this, are you currently at full capacity right now? You're still on the lottery system?
Yeah.
You have more applicants than you have.
Yeah, we have, we have well over 2,200 people on a waiting list for this coming school year, and that's the perpetual, every year it's well over 2,000, waiting for a spot to open up.
So, all five of my kids went to Santa Rosa at one time, so I'm familiar with it. My only comment I had with staff when we were talking earlier was, I'm glad to hear that the queuing system's working well, however, with, I remember my daughter was the photographer at all your football games, and the parking gets crazy. It's obviously not enough parking here for, most kids who go here don't have cars, right? So, during events, my suggestion to staff was to open up the east side of Sherman Road from about, there's a turn pocket from right about the middle of your field, and then that's where it stops, all the way down, open that up to parking for drop-off or for events and things like that. So, I was given this, we had the discussion, given the email, basically saying that during special events, by the way, that area's currently parked, Mark Millpark, all the way down.
Right.
So, is that at the special events, you cover those signs and it allows parking? Are you familiar with that at all?
We don't, we don't do that because we don't have control over what the streets say, but when we do have a special event, it's usually graduation. We do in advance work out with the city and with traffic enforcement, a special parking arrangement for street parking, and they've been wonderful, and we've made, we've made those arrangements for the, for that evening when we have graduation, and it works out really well. The city has, even in the past, opened up their dirt lot parking over by Central Park because that's just a very short walk to our campus, and so that's been an option in the past as well. We've also had good relationship with Target and Lowe's, and they have not minded at all for when we do have graduation that we have some folks parking over there and walk across the street for graduation.
Commissioner Thomas, can you please turn your mic on?
Sorry. So, last comment is, I'll have to confess some sins here. So, when I was taking my kids to school, maybe the queuing wasn't as wonderful then, but there's the Sherman and La Piedra, and we would go over to the corner, what, the northwest corner over there, go on La Piedra and drop off on that side, and then they would run across, because there was just too many cars, there were too many students. My other suggestion was, once that, the west side of La Piedra, as you go west from your, from your location, as that, right now it's not developed, but as that develops, that the city consider widening it long enough to allow parking along there for events or drop-offs or something like that. So, I, again, hopefully this queuing system works good, but I know at certain times this does happen, so.
I will add that even myself, as a parent at Santa Rosa Academy, I try to do my part just to avoid bringing a vehicle into the area when my wife has to pick up our son because I have a late meeting, and so I'll have my son walk to Han and walk down Han and let her pick him up down on Han, out of the area, so, you know. So, one, one car at a time, we try to, you know, send more cars to the outer areas and not bring them in.
That was the thinking of opening up Sherman down south on Sherman. People park down there, get them out of the skew, kind of a thing, so.
We're open to that idea. I don't know what the turn lane requirements are out there or what the requirements are for the street signage, but the city professionals and traffic safety officers, they're well-versed. They could advise on that.
Yeah, I'm not proposing a condition or anything. I'm just bringing it from my personal experience, and as future events grow out there, that may be a consideration, so that's all.
Commissioner Merz.
Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you.
My question was going to be Michael's question, so I'm glad he asked it, and so that has been answered for me, but I also have another question. Has the school conducted any community forums to share with the community about the expansion of the school? Or like, are residents aware that there's potentially going to be more cars, even with the queuing system?
Yes, and not only did the city do a mailer to all of the residents that were, that live within a certain distance of our property, we also just recently had our 25th birthday for Santa Rosa Academy. It was this past spring, and so we had a community event and sent out flyers because it wasn't just for our students and families, it was for the whole community. And while it did drizzle just a little bit, we did have a present, a public presentation in pictures and on posters, and I explained in a speech all about the new facility and what it brings to the campus. But that was a culmination of a few years about speaking about completing the campus build-out. We've been discussing it in our board meetings and at our community events about the need to complete our campus build-out. We actually started with a different concept many years ago. It was just going to be a theater-only, but our, you know, our families recognized that we needed more space for elementary students to match the size of space that we have for middle and high school. This expansion is going to solve that issue while keeping our much-needed theater.
Thank you.
Very good. All my questions have been answered. Whatever you're doing out there, keep doing it.
Oh, it's God's work. I love it.
It's working well. Amen. Commissioners, any more questions for Dr. Hennings? Okay, thank you, Dr. Hennings.
Thank you, commissioners.
Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak, or would anyone in the audience like to make a public comment?
I have one request to speak. David Faust.
Thank you, commissioners. David Faust, Santa Rosa Board of Director, Community Representative. I'm not a parent of students, but we do have two seats on the board that have community representatives that help kind of bring the community input into, into the operation of the school. And so, I'm writing, I'm here to express my support for, for the adoption of the two resolutions before you. You know, Santa Rosa Academy is, is just a gem in the community. It's a beautiful campus. It's, it's been a cornerstone of educational excellence in our community for now 20 years, since our founding in 2005, and currently with a 63,000-square-foot campus. And so, Monterey Hall, which is what we've named this, this new building, this almost 29,000-square-foot facility, two-story, 16 classrooms and a theater, really marks not just a milestone, but really a capstone to our campus project. And so, we hope to open at the end of next summer for the '26, '27 school year, and we're confident that this, this new facility is going to enhance our elementary school's capacity and provide a dedicated space for performing arts, which is well-needed, helping to foster creativity and strengthening our school community. We are committed, as you know, to innovation and character development and preparing students for leadership and with our values of excellence, integrity, and respect. And so, I, if you approve these actions, they will support our continued growth and be, continue to be, and we will continue to be a positive impact on the region's students and families, especially here in Menifee. And so, I thank you for your consideration, and I urge you, the commissioners, to adopt this, the proposed resolutions and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thank you to any of the board members that are here from the academy tonight. I see one. And one councilman from Canyon Lake. Okay, so if there are no further public comments, Gloria, nothing to say? Nah, okay, then I will close the public hearing at 6:36 PM. Okay, Planning Commission, any other comments or discussion? Covered. Okay, there are two resolutions for adoption. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt the resolutions presented?
I'll make the motion. I don't even know where it's at. There we go.
Okay. Okay, passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Okay, that takes us to item 10, discussion items. Are there any discussion items?
There are no discussion items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, let's go to 11, Community Development Director, comments. Orlando.
I do have one comment for the commission. I would like to acknowledge and thank Rachel. Today is going to be her last meeting, helping us with the planning commission. She's not going anywhere, okay? So, she's, she's still with us, but we will have Edna helping us out moving forward. But I did, wanted to take a moment and thank Rachel for her great work and helping us out this past few years, so thank you for everything and for helping us and making sure we do things right up here, so thank you.
Of course, thank you. It's been such a pleasure.
Thank you, Rachel.
We're going to miss you. You did a great job.
I'll miss you guys.
Who's going to keep him in line?
I will say this, that there was always a smile at the end of this row. She's always got a smile. Even when things were, get a little heated and we had fun, you know, things were going, she was always, so I thought that was great.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Orlando. Okay. Commissioner reports on committee activities. Michael, what did you bring you up to this week? Last week?
I was camping in Utah. I didn't attend a thing, and it was kind of nice just to take a break, but since I have the mic, I'm going to take advantage of this. Hopefully, you'll like this one. I would like to make a request of you to close out this meeting in memory of our former mayor.
Thank you. What Michael's saying is, we'd like to pay our respects to John Denver, our past wonderful councilman, and just to name a few. You want to know, there's a beautiful article on him on the city website, for those of you that didn't know some of the things that were on there that he did, so thank you, John, for everything. Anyone, any other words for John? No, okay. I guess Chris knew him the longest, so. So, okay, thank you, Michael. Any other committee activities? Nothing more? Okay. Future agenda requests from planning commissioners. Would the planning commission like to request any future agenda items? Okay, that's easy. All right, are there any coming that we requested in the past?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's one that's coming, and as soon as we conclude the global traffic study, then we'll bring back some findings.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, item 14, adjourn. I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 6:00.